Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City Council adjourn meeting of Monday, October 16, 2017. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Okay. Albertson? Bueller? Bueller. Danforth?
Here.
Lallum, absent. Manti, absent. Roby?
Here.
Solom?
Here.
Thorson?
Here.
Vilhauer?
Here.
Y?
Present.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I really hope not to start every meeting this way, but our country has had yet another tragedy, and I think we need to take it a moment of silence to recognize the victims of the California fires. Over 40 people have died, and 3,500 homes and businesses have burned to the ground. So let's take a moment of silence to think of them. Okay. Thank you. First item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion and second?
They'll move second.
Moved by Solom, second by Bueller. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Second item is approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Vilhauer. Second by Y. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. The third item on the agenda is the Mayor's State of the City Address. And I'm happy to give that to you. I passed out my report of my first 100 days and my assessment of the state of the city. And I'm not going to read that report, but I will put it on the website, and I've given it to the press, and so that if anyone wants a copy of that, they can surely get it from me. But basically, it's been 100 days, and I've learned a lot. I've spent a lot of time talking to people, meeting the city employees, going to lots and lots of committee meetings, and just checking our community out. And I'm happy to say we are in good condition. And even though the economy is uncertain, we have some challenges that lie ahead of us, we are well set to address any challenge that comes our way. Our quality of life in this city is very good. It's something we care a lot about, and the bones are there for expansion of that, as are the bones for infrastructure expansion should our city need to grow. So we have what we need in terms of shovel-ready lots for business expansions, commercial, industrial, and we have land available which could readily develop into residential housing as well. So I feel like we're in really good shape. And as you might recall, for my term as mayor, I have some basic goals, and want to talk about those a little bit. The first goal was to create a quality-of-life management strategy. The second, to establish an affordable housing framework. The third, to build a city organization optimization plan. The fourth, to generate an economic health program. And the fifth was to give the State of the City Address, which I'm doing right now, and I hope to do periodically. So just want to quickly touch on those issues. The lifestyle elements are excellent in Watertown. We've been through a couple of visioning processes. The H-2020 Vision Process took place, and we came up with a whole book full of ideas and things to work on, and we've checked a lot of those boxes off. Some of the things that we are actively working on that aren't complete yet include the ice arena, the gun range, two-way streets, and continuing the bike trail around Lake Compeska. And so those are all in the works. None of those has gone away. We'll be seeing some forward movement on all of them within the next year. The H-2020 Visioning Process did have many other goals. They weren't all capital improvement-type projects, and I've listed those in my report. But there still are quite a few opportunities for improvements in that regard. One of the things that came out of the H-2020 Visioning was that we needed some sort of downtown strategy. And so the first step in that was the charrette that took place a couple of years ago. And the charrette was coming together of a really large group of people looking specifically at our downtown and setting goals there. We haven't checked off too many of those items. One of the main things was to adopt a strategic plan for the downtown. And just last, just very recently, last month, the H-2020 Committee authorized the Urban Renewal District Board to move forward hiring a consultant to help put together a strategic plan for Kemp and Broadway. So we're hoping that that will incorporate a lot of the elements of the charrette into a plan with costs and phasing for dates and priorities for when to do those projects. So we'll be looking forward to that in the very near future, too. Affordable housing was a big deal for me, and it will be. It's an issue for our community. I formed two committees to address affordable housing. One is the Development Committee, which is looking at ways to streamline the process of development so that we can prepare for building from an infrastructure standpoint, and also look at our building codes for opportunities to cut costs there as well, so that the actual building process is streamlined. And the other committee I called Home Ownership and Affordable Housing is looking at program opportunities. And I think that there are some opportunities for the City of Watertown to develop its own kind of program. I know they're doing it in Sioux Falls, and I had a chance to visit with the staff for the City of Sioux Falls. They're going about it very aggressively, and we can learn a lot from them. There's no need to invent any wheels. There's a lot of stuff out there, and so I'm looking forward to moving forward with that. The third item is city organization. And I just so much enjoyed meeting with all the different departments, and we have some really awesome city employees that work for the City of Watertown. And people seem genuinely happy to be working for the city. And my message of everyone knowing the city's mission, to provide responsible and open government for the citizens, that was welcomed, and I was able to express that to all of the city employees, and think that we'll be working together very well in the future. I did see a couple of places specifically that could use a little bit of TLC, specifically the Engineering Department, which lost several staff members about 10 years ago and has got increased duties. So it could really use a fresh look at its organization to improve its functioning, as well as the Park Department. Park, Rec, and Forestry Department has taken on lots of brand-new major facilities without a big increase in staff. And I think that we can really look at the organization and how we manage things. Again, I had a chance to visit with some other cities, specifically Sioux Falls, and how they manage their park amenities. They farm the management of those facilities out, and we have some new facilities. I think we should look at that as they're coming online with our new ice arena and maybe the softball complex in Sioux Falls. They farm out the management of their zoo, of their golf course, and other park amenities. And I would like to take a look at that because they, then the city employees are able to focus on their jobs as Park and Rec Department employees, and they don't have to be so specialized in those areas. And those individual items, the ice arena, for instance, might have a very specific type of management that's called for, and who might not have that expertise within the city organization. But I'm not saying we're going to do that for sure, but just want to look at it. And then the other area that jumped out to me, looking like it needs some attention, is the Urban Renewal District. And looking at the community's vision for itself and the general feeling of what's important to the citizens here, the downtown rises to the top all the time, and I'm not sure that we've been focusing commensurate attention on the downtown. I just want to make sure that we are spending appropriate levels of attention and focus on the downtown as the community desires. So that's a third area. Beyond the city organization, the economic health of our community is a big deal. And that was one of my main goals, is to come up with a strategy for economic health. And my main goal in forming a committee was to help me to establish the main criteria for determining how we stand as a city in terms of economic health. And there are lots of models out there, each using different indicators for what constitutes a healthy community. And I have had a great outpouring of expertise and people willing to help me with this to will be looking at different models and coming up with a unique one for Watertown. And I want to thank all of the people that have come out to volunteer to serve on the various committees, and I've enjoyed meeting them and looking forward to working with them as time goes on. The next steps for the City of Watertown, just to keep plugging away at these various items and tune our vision altogether toward moving forward for Watertown together as a community. And I'm confident that if we all are on the same page and we're all striving for that goal of prosperity for our community and doing what's right and best for our community, we'll get there. So I thank you all for helping me put that together. And hopefully, I'll be doing another, it might not be a year. I don't know if this is the best time of year to do a State of the City, but I'll be looking at doing it periodically throughout my term as mayor. So then, the next item on the agenda is number four, 2017 Street Improvement Projects. The Assessment Role. And I would like to, motion to open the, I think I just have to open the, open the public hearing, and then Kristin, if you'd like to introduce this.
Okay. So this is the special assessment role for the 2017 Street Improvement Projects. It was bid in April. You guys approved it at that point. So this is actually assessing it back to the property owners.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak about the Street Assessment Project? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and look for a motion and second to approve the assessment role. Moved by Roby. Second by Bueller. Any discussion?
Is this a gravel alley going to pavement? Can you just go back?
Yeah, this was a gravel alley that was petitioned for, to receive improvements to asphalt paving. And it was petitioned by nearly 100% of the occupants of the block. And so we went forward through the assessment process and had the public hearing with the necessity last spring, or fall, and this is the culmination of that project.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number five is the Special Assessment Role for Weed Cutting. And I'll open the public hearing at this time. If anyone's here to speak about this, please come forward. Kristin, do you want to say anything?
This is another process that happens this time every year. If there's any properties throughout the city that we have to go in and maintain their weeds or lawn mowing, we bill it out to the property owner, and if they have a certain amount of time to come in and pay, this is the point where if they haven't paid at the city, we'll turn it over to the county. So this is what you're doing at this point.
So these have been billed, not paid, or delinquent?
Correct.
So now that gets assessed to their taxes, is that correct?
That's right. Yep. It's turned over to the county.
No one else in the audience wants to come forward? I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion and second for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Albertson, second by Danforth. Any further discussion?
I do, actually. Does the city itself do this mowing, or do we contract that out? Do we have businesses that we have in line that?
My current, my understanding is that the Street Department actually is the one who goes out and mows.
Okay. And how do we charge for this?
I wish Rob was here, but I believe that Rob keeps track of how many hours it takes and the man out, you know, the people that are doing it, and then it's turned into building services, I believe. I think, yep.
There's a minimum?
Yeah.
Minimum fee?
I think this is something that we shouldn't be doing. I think this should be like we use other contractors when we need snow removal or things like that. I think we should be...
We have done that in certain cases. I think we do. Are you sure? Please can.
Well, the reason why I say that, I don't think we charge enough to do this to, and with the capital equipment and the timing that it takes to do all this. I think when we have somebody, I think we should be, have somebody on the list and say, "Go get it done," and bill them.
This is the first year that you actually approved us to go out and do that, and we put out bids for it, and we never got a single response to come back to us. That's why we had to go back to the Street Department. Nobody wants the job.
Wait, Ken, before you go. You're saying that nobody wants to bid on doing this work?
Not one single person.
Because I've had somebody come to me and ask me about it.
Yeah, I've had a number of calls, but nobody turned in a bid.
Well, how do you bid something that you don't know what your, do they understand what it is they're bidding?
I think the biggest fear is that when we do this, we're actually telling somebody to go on somebody's private property. And it's different if you're doing a park or anything else, but when the city goes, it's the city going on somebody's private property. None of them have that comfort level that, and somebody's not going to come out and whatever, you know? You're not pulling up with a city vehicle, you're just pulling up with ABC whatever, and you're going to start mowing this guy's lawn, or cutting his trees, or trimming his weeds, and it's a whole different prospect than a city vehicle pulling up, and people are going to have a lot different take on that, seeing just a private individual come up. That's a consent I got from the people that talked to me, because nobody would submit a bid. We advertised two or three times for it.
So what kind of equipment does the city streets have to do somebody's little lawn? They got little push lawn mowers or something?
No, I think they probably just got little riders. They might have push, I'm not even sure what they go out and do it with either, I'm sorry.
I'd like to understand how we bill for this, because we've got, maybe Rob could give us his formula or whatever it is, because...
He has a different rate for the various different types of machinery, depending on which they use, and an hourly rate for the staff as well, plus a bottom fee for having to get out there, mobilize to the site.
Yep. I would say the fee would have to be pretty high. It's almost a penalty, you know? So people don't use us as their yard service.
On the assessments, Kristin, is that, do they have to pay that immediately, or does that get spread out?
They had until this point to come in, so this could have been multiple mowings or weed maintenance. They had until now to come in. As far as once it's turned over to the county, I'm not sure at the county point what happens. I don't know if Vince is aware or...
Kenny, I'm going to ask this question. I think I know the answer, but if we contracted this to somebody to outsource this, would city liability cover them, or would it have to be their own liability?
I'd have to give that to Vince.
Their own. That's what I thought.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number six is ordinance number 17-37, amending section 21.0202 of the revised ordinances to the City of Watertown regarding zoning procedures. And I'd like to open the public hearing. Is anyone here to speak about this? Basically, this is for building permits which haven't begun construction within a year, that they run out of time and it's a variance, excuse me, or a conditional use. Anything else I should say about it, Vince?
Well, there's a shortening of the appeal period from the building official from 60 days to 30, number one. Number two, there's the expiration of a conditional use permit sunset, and then a variant sunset.
Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public hearing and ask for council action. Is there a sec, first, motion and second, please? Moved by Vilhauer, second by Roby. Any further discussion?
This has gone through the Planning Commission. This is now a second reading before us, correct?
Yes.
So Vince, what you mentioned are the only things that are changing. Is that correct?
Well, that was a summary of what was changing, but those are the areas that are changing, yes.
Okay.
If you look, I mean, that's the concept of the agenda item now, is we have the shortened version of the ordinance, which doesn't have all of the extraneous text. And then we attach, we include in the packet the illustration to show where it fits in the context. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number seven is second reading of ordinance number 17-38, amending section 21.0207 of the revised ordinances to the City of Watertown, declare incomplete constructions with lapsed building permits to be nuisances. And it's essentially just that. I'll open the public hearing. Is anyone here to speak about this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion and second for approval.
No.
Moved by Danforth, second by Thorson. Any discussion?
Don, I know you raised this question at the first reading a couple of weeks ago, and I mean, reasonable amount of time, that is something that you're comfortable with, Vince, or there is some basis for using that terminology?
Yes. Who says lawyers are wordy?
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number eight is ordinance number 17-39, amending section 21.0404 of the revised ordinances to the City of Watertown to provide for automatic lapse of discontinued, nonconforming uses. I'll open the public hearing at this time. Is anyone here to speak about this issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and look for a motion and second for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Albertson.
Here.
Second by Bueller. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item nine, authorization for the mayor to sign an intergovernmental agreement with various counties for E-911 telephone service. Scott?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll try and provide some background information pertaining to this intergovernmental agreement. The City of Watertown and Kinton County has had a long history of working together to provide 911 services to the public here in this area. In fact, it goes back to about 1993, when the first intergovernmental agreement was signed between the City of Watertown and Kinton County. Since that time, there's been four revisions, and each one of those revisions has been mostly updating the dates and a few other minor tweaks. The intergovernmental agreement before you tonight, the change is, is back in 2012, the amount of surcharges from the county to the city was reduced from 100% to 95. And this year, we were asking the county to go back to 100% surcharge funding to the city. So that's what this agreement is. We have gone before the council, or the commissioners, and they have agreed to sign this agreement.
Okay. I'll look for a motion and second to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
So moved.
Moved by Solom, second by Vilhauer. Any discussion?
I just have a question going forward, Scott. I know that funding's an issue here, and now that they're tapped out at 100%, costs continue to rise, can you give us a little bit of a gut at what you see happen the next few years?
Well, this past year, we went to each one of the counties that we serve. We serve a six-county area, Day, Grant, Hamlin, Kinton, Dool, Clark. And we spoke with each of the commissions, and we said that if we could go to 100% in 2017 and 2018, we would be fine at 100% for those two years. And my hope is that we can go beyond those two years, maybe even add an extra year or two onto that. You know, we are trying to plan for some of those increases. Our increases at the 911 center, you know, yes, we have a lot of technical equipment, but our increases is mostly in staff. Every year, there's a 3% raise or a 2.5%, whatever that amount is, that's where we see our increase. I know Councilman Danforth asked the question one of the last times I was here, you know, why has it gone from, say, $170,000 city supplement in 2003 to a $350,000 supplement today? Well, if you look at that, that's, you know, 13 years, 3% each year. It comes up to about that difference between 130 and 350. So our main costs are staff increases. Maintenance increases do happen, but not as much as the staff increase.
Well, that's my concern. Those graphs are going apart, and the revenue sources really are dried up. Your only chance is to get another county in, or to somehow get more money out of those counties. And if you had 100%, that doesn't...
Yeah. It's a tough formula. It's a tough formula to figure out. I've been looking at it very carefully the last couple of years that I've been involved with it. And fortunately, we were able to bring on Dool County and Clark County at a time that we really needed that extra assistance financially. And we were able to do that without hiring more full-time staff. We did hire some part-time staff, but we didn't hire any full-time. And our intent is to continue to look at this. There are some options, you know, from the Department of Revenue side, the surcharges that we get back that's collected from the people, that, like you said, is flat. It's not increasing, it's staying the same. But there are other alternatives that we can look at to raise more funds without taxing the counties more. And one way to do that is expand our service area, whether we do that by offering 911 services to another county, or we look at charging for some of the things that are not 911, such as taking traffic stop information, taking telephone calls from sheriff's offices or police departments in the northeast region of South Dakota. So, you know, it wouldn't even have to be somebody that we currently serve for 911. It could be, you know, it could be a small police department to the west or east of here, whatever it might be. But there are some options for that. But the main thing is, is we have to try and do that without increasing... But the main thing is, is we have to try and do that without increasing staff, because as soon as I take on another county or add additional responsibilities, I need two or three more staff. And we all know that equals about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars real quickly, so.
Scott, as I understand it, we collect seventy percent of, from the Department of Public Safety of the surcharges, that's collected, is that right?
With the state 911, Senate Bill one-seventy-four is what it is, that created the law that says yes. Out of all the surcharges that are collected from the people, a dollar twenty-five per device, cellphone or landline, goes to the Department of Revenue. The Department of Revenue takes about thirty percent of that, and then they send the other seventy-five percent back, or seventy percent back. So we get about eighty-six and a half cents of that dollar twenty-five.
So is that rate and the percentage, are those legislatively set then, so that if there's a push and peer, then that there could be some additional revenue collected by getting action out there?
Right. Right now, it's actually rather than increasing, it is set to sunset in twenty nineteen now, I believe they changed it to back to a dollar, or revert back to a dollar from a dollar twenty-five. We're hoping that between now and then, the public will endorse or assist us in working with the legislature to increase that amount. Obviously, nobody likes a little bit of extra tax, but it is for emergency purposes, and we hope that the public will agree with us on that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Item number ten is authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement with the U.S. Geological Survey for operations and maintenance of various water gauging stations and related equipment for water resource investigations. This is an annual cost-sharing agreement that the city signs with the USGS. We share the cost with them and, in some cases, with other parties. And Shane, did you happen to look at the cost from last year? Could I get a motion in second to approve authorization to sign the agreement?
Some move.
Moved by Albertson, second by Thorson. Any further discussion? Did you find it, Shane?
The amounts appear to be the same this year as last year.
Okay. They don't raise it up every year. Every few years, they'll add to it. But we need to have it done, and they're the experts in providing the stream gauging, so it works out well for everyone. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number eleven, consideration of change order number three final to the contract with Gray Construction for the Watertown Premier Softball Complex Project number fifteen twenty-four, decreasing the contract by five thousand five hundred fifteen dollars, eighteen cents. Shane?
I'll give an introduction, and then Lucas Hoover from Helms and Associates is here, and so is Jay Delang. So any specific questions, they might be able to answer more correctly than I can. So this is the final change order, adjusting the final quantities to the as-built quantities, including all change order items and subsequent work that was done on the project. And as you can see, the original contract was to award the base bid and alternates one through seven for a total contract of five million, five hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred dollars. And subsequently, through change orders one, two, and now this change order number three final, the amount of the contract has shrunk to five million, four hundred and eighty-five thousand, forty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. So we've done a pretty good job of not managing, or managing it so that the job didn't creep beyond our intended means. And a lot of work went into that through weekly meetings, and, you know, we had a lot of engagement from city and contractor and engineering staff that led to this conclusion. So with that, I'll leave it for any specific questions, but in general, the staff has recommended approval of this change order.
Thank you. Any questions for Lucas?
I'm not sure whether this is Lucas, or Jay, or Bruce, or who issue, but I know that there were some concerns on some open issues. Bruce, you had mentioned at some point, where are we at on those as it relates to this final change order? Are those warranty items? Are they, what are they?
Well, I can address that. I think there are a few things that are still dangling out there a little bit. One of them is that VFD for the irrigation system. What is that, twenty-six hundred bucks or something? I think that was something that needed to be, and I don't know if that has anything to do with us signing off on the change order, but since Mike asked the question, I'll address it. The other thing were the canopy issues that we have out there, the shade structures, and how we proceed with that. We're looking at that. I think we've got an answer to that. And then the other thing that we had discussions about was the infield irrigation. And, you know, when we tested the irrigation on the infield, obviously, they don't go into the infield very far. And, you know, Mike and I actually had a conversation trying to remember back, which we have to do all the time, it seems like, and it gets harder. But we had discussions with the architects early on, which, you guys. And that was that we were gonna, that we wanted to be able to automatically irrigate those infills. Now it's gotten to be, wow, we'll put some valves out there and hook a hose up. Well, that's what we do at Cook, and we actually installed that at Cook when we renovated Cook. But I think the intent originally was that we were going to do that, and that didn't happen. And I brought that up months ago, and that's still dangling out there. I'm not sure where we're going with that, but I do, and Bob Abcock said, "I'll review my notes, because I don't think that was in there." Well, I never heard a word back from Bob. So my assumption is that that wasn't, that he didn't say that we weren't gonna do that, that we were gonna put hoses, connections, whatever. But there, we need, I think we really need to look at some sort of remedy. There was some discussion about guns that would shoot further out into the infield from the outside edges of the agri-lime. And then we had, there was some discussion, just some ideas thrown around about possible irrigation heads, you know, integral to the poles, perhaps, on the backstops. But those are some of the issues. I mean, I don't walk away from this until we got these questions answered. I think, like you say, we have some proposals on what we need to do with the shade structures. There were some issues with holes in the shade structures and warranty and insurance, and we'll be addressing that, I think. And from my standpoint, I think we're probably be in pretty good shape, but that'll certainly be up to this council to decide what direction we want to go with that. The other thing was trees, and I don't recall, this one I don't know for sure, but we put islands in the parking lot. We didn't put islands in the parking lot, just have islands in the parking lot with rocks. I mean, the original intent was we're gonna have trees and perhaps some plants. We'd looked at trees, and that hasn't happened. And I don't recall if the former mayor decided that we were just gonna go and do that on our own, or if that was part of the overall plan to be completed with this facility. And so we need to, we need to make sure we get that all sorted out, I guess, Lucas, and, because I believe those are the things, in my opinion, anyway, that we still need to get done and to look into.
Well, thank you, Bruce, I guess. Any other?
I've got a question. How did, I mean, all the extra time that Jay, that some of your staff spent, you know, rectifying some things out there, I mean, how did that get accounted for? What became of those costs and time involved?
That was billed out to Gray Construction, which they have paid, and then part of the cost is part of, excuse me, part of this change order in that there was another half application for seed and fertilizer that was in the contract. And we kind of took that over and did that ourselves when we accelerated the progress on the complex.
For the good of the public, I'd like to interject one more thing. We got in a bit of a pickle out there early on in the construction, because we got, the contractor got behind on concrete work. And that sort of had a domino effect on everything else that was supposed to get done. You know, our intention was to have this baby up and running and the grass growing good in the spring. And because of that issue with the concrete, it just set everything behind. And then there was, winter came, and we overseeded, and that's a crapshoot to see if that's gonna work out or not. We didn't have the best winter for that type of activity, and so we had to do a lot of supplemental work this spring. So just for everybody's information, that's sort of where we, where all this went. I was out there last week with Jay, because we were looking at some other things, walking around, and one being the shade structures. But, God, the grass looks just really, really good. It looks really, it really came in, and hats off to your folks, too, Jay, and guys from the golf course, bang-up job. It really does, really. There's a few things that still need a little work in the turf, but overall, bang-up job.
The positive thing is, one of the two tournaments that we held this year, I got a call from one of the sponsors of the Coed State Tournament, and they want to come back again next year, so they liked our facility.
The reason why I brought this up, before you get going on yours, is because it says a final change order in here. It's possible this may not be a final change order, or would it be done outside of this project in a manner, if we have some of the other things that need to get done that are, in fact, our responsibility?
Well, I guess, Lucas, you may need to address that. If this is a change order for some, if this is a sign-off, to me, I'm not ready to sign off on this, in my opinion.
No, thank you, Bruce, and rest of the council, the mayor. I think actually Shane is the one who put the final on the change order. I guess we knew there were a few of these items dangling out there, so this does not necessarily act as a sign-off, a hundred percent complete. We do know there are some items, and I'd like to address a couple of those. You first started with the VFDs, and that's actually on this change order. I believe the amount is like sixty-six hundred dollars for those. Or sixty-nine fifty-six is item, is one of the change order items. As you can tell, we're not trying to hide them there, but the change order did come to a negative, but there was an additional item added for that VFD drives. Talking with the Confluence, the irrigation experts on this, essentially, whether it's right or wrong, we probably should have had the VFD drives in there originally. It maximizes the system. It, it's kind of an insurance policy. What the VFD drives do is they ramp up and down. It's not the instantaneous water coming to all your valves and your sprinkler heads. You can ramp up at a slower pace, those increase those RPMs, and avoid any water hammer, and eventually water breaks. I know we did have a few water breaks on the irrigation system, which I know kind of really prompted this, is we reacted, and we think this VFD drives will definitely solve those future issues. Secondly, you mentioned trees. We had, originally, in the engineer's estimates, we kind of had a line item in there for landscaping. The rocks actually in the parking lot islands, that was a, it wasn't part of the contract. We were gonna leave those kind of as-is. The former mayor in, signed off to make those rocks. I know that was not part of the contract. I definitely agree. I know there's certain towns have certain landscape ordinances, so many trees per islands, and we followed that, but we tried to avoid a ten, twenty percent markup by contractors, by not putting those trees in there, shrubs or bushes or whatever, so.
If I recall, we did entertain having plantings in there, and we requested a cost, and that we decided ultimately that the cost was prohibitive to what we would gain out of that. So we decided to delay that and maybe add the plantings later with city staff, is how I recall it, Jay.
I think that's right. I think you're right about that. I think we talked about a lot of the smaller plants and that kind of thing. The trees, I just wasn't sure about the tree part of it. There, I know we had discussion in that regard with the former mayor, but I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't a part of the overall cost, was putting trees in there.
No, I think we talked about the Park and Rec staff, well, it was supposed to be this last summer, but obviously with some delays, putting in the trees in the islands at a future date.
Well, part of the concern was lack of irrigation out in those islands, that we wanted to be able to make sure that whatever we did out there was manageable.
Another topic you had was the canopies. In the latest on the canopies, I guess, for use, if people aren't aware of it, Gray Construction installed the canopies in two thousand sixteen, probably in July or August, I think. They stayed up until the fall. Granted, there's never play out there, but they were taken down, and maybe Jay can help answer. I think the city staff took those down, Park and Rec. They took them down, they stored them in the Empires Room. We put them up again this spring. At that point, there was notice there's some holes, some rips, tears, however you want to put it. Some are pinholes, some are maybe the size of a golf ball. Obviously, the project is still under hands of Gray Construction, and we kind of get to finger-pointing part of it. I know the city was helping out, Park and Rec. The latest is Gray Construction has a five thousand dollar deductible. They're looking to talk with the city, or Park and Rec, and to split that amount. And that would be ten new shade structures and patch kits. So at twenty-five hundred bucks for those, you'd get ten new shade structures, so roughly two hundred and fifty dollars a piece. Set those aside for future years, for future use. I know you have similar fabric at Cook. Is there a lifespan typically? I mean, obviously, we don't like to see holes in these within the first six months of their use, but they would definitely be used down the line at the premier fields.
Let me clarify something for the public, okay, that, because people may have questions about this. Mysteriously, when these were put back up, they had holes, had these holes. And Jay and I looked at them again last week, and we, you know, one of the things we thought, because originally, it was gonna cost a hell of a lot more than that. We started looking at these things, and I thought, you know, maybe some of these aren't that bad. We wouldn't have to pay that much. Keep the ones, maybe we can patch some of the smaller ones. We just wanted to look at that. In fact, we even talked about bringing some patch stuff in, put it on, see how it looks. You know, versus just knock, sock, and barrel saying, let's get them all out and put all new ones in, and then it's gonna cost the city a pile of money. Well, there's been some compromise, there's been some compromise from the insurance company. I think we're probably getting these things at cost. And so now, what's happened, like you said, is that we, what Gray has graciously agreed to pay for half of this, because we can't really say how it happened. We don't know. I mean, there's the, some people think mice got into them, or somebody maybe ripped them, putting them up or taking them down, and we don't know who. So at the end of the day, there's a compromise here, because you can't really prove who did what. And so I think it ultimately is a great deal. I think if we pay the half of that deductible, twenty-five hundred dollars, what did we pay for all those things originally?
Hang on.
Well, I'm not saying, I didn't say deductible. I just said some hour...
You just said pay twenty-five hundred the deductible. You mean, you mean a global settlement of a claim?
Well, again, this is something we all have to agree to, but I'm not saying, I don't know if, I don't know if you can call it a deductible. I don't know what you put label you put on this. What I'm saying is, if however we gotta help compensate for this is twenty-five hundred bucks, we're gonna get new shade structures that we can keep and we can store, put up, we keep the old ones, store them away, patch them, whatever. But the original group of structures, what did they cost originally? Was it fifteen thousand dollars? It was seventeen thousand? It was a lot.
They were on a per-age basis, and it was the steel, the erection part of it, as much as anything compared to the fabric itself. It's hard to break that down.
But to me, in my opinion, I think it's a really good, good deal for the city, however. But again, I'm not the say-so on whether or not or where this money comes from. And what Vince is saying, we have to be a little cautious, I think. See, because I'm gonna put words in his mouth, and that is, we have to be cautious. I didn't know we were gonna talk about this tonight, but we have to be cautious about deductibles, contracts, and where we come up with that money. Even though it's a small sum, twenty-five hundred bucks, it's...
That's not part of the change order.
No. Correct. So if that would be part of another change order, obviously, this number three is not a final. That'd be on four, and hopefully, that would be it. One other topic I want to discuss, which you brought up, Bruce, was the infield irrigation. We did look back through our notes. Originally, during the design team, we had our meetings that are numerous back in, what, twenty fifteen? Maybe even in fourteen, but the notes that Bob and I found were, they were originally talked about. We were gonna put a sprinkler system behind home, or behind the pitcher's mound. The talk through maintenance staff is their maintenance nightmare, having those sprinklers actually in the agri-lime. They clog up, they don't work nearly as they should. They, they clog up. They don't work nearly as they should and they're replaced regularly. It's also in the way of any sort of grooming equipment, maintenance. So at that point, we had the quick couplers were just on the outside of the infield for hoses.
Does anybody put automated irrigation on their infills? Have you done that anywhere? Of course, you guys haven't done a lot of these, have you?
We've done fields before, but I would, I would have to ask that question. I'm, I'm not familiar with other facilities and, and what they have for irrigation directly in the agri lime.
I honestly do not remember any conversation about behind the pitcher's mound. I do remember saying something about having them so they, that we would cover the whole infield.
I remember the conversation behind the pitcher's mound because it was every time them heads pop up, they're going to be taking that agri lime in. They're going to, they're going, we don't have to replace them on a regular basis. So that's why they were decided to put out into the grass. What are they about eighteen inches into the grass?
Correct.
So they, they shoot in about maybe thirty feet into the infield. That's it. I mean, it's not, it's not doing a quarter of the infield.
Yeah, I know we did talk to Confluence again after, this is probably back in July, August, when you were having these conversations Bruce and, obviously we can do some additions to the irrigation system. That's not a problem. Obviously it'll cost some additional money. You guys have had two tournaments out there. I, I know I was by the, the, I was through town on the one, the Coed Tournament, the most recent one. It was not very good weather, so it wasn't like it was a July day where it's ninety five out and windy. So obviously there's probably less, uh, dust being built up that time of year, but definitely throughout the future, that, that will be a concern. I think that's true statement. Um, we'll definitely look into that and report back our findings on what that might cost.
You, you are right though. You, you don't want to put those heads in the agri lime because eventually they just get covered up. Your grooming equipment's going to break them. So you, you don't want to do that. I do know, John, I think we at one point talked about a valve behind, uh, the pitcher's mound. And, um, you know, to me, um, you know, not only is it quality of play, but it's also a labor savings for, for Jay and his staff. Because we got to go out there and we got, what have we got, five fields out there? Now, it's not just a tournament issue. It's we got league and we got general maintenance have to take care of and, and watering those, it doesn't seem like you should water dirt, but you do water that agri lime in order to maintain it properly every day. So, um, so it is a, to me, it's a, a labor issue for, for Jay as well as a quality issue. So I do think we need to come up with some type of plan and estimated cost on it just to see what, what we'd end up with.
Yeah, and I know preliminary, we're looking at moving it to the very perimeter, what's right behind, uh, next to the backstop or next to the dugouts. I mean, get as far away from the playing surface. I think we could put a, a larger sprinkler in that's obviously has maybe more pressure, more volume of water to reach out. But it's kind of a, there's, there's pros and cons of it, obviously, is we don't want to have the maintenance and the, and the issues with them in the infield, but we also want to get the, get the agri uncovered.
Yeah, it wouldn't make sense to me either to have them on the infield, but I, I thought we talked about back by the backstop in the, in the inner part of the infield. We, I know we've had those conversations since that time. So that's something, I think it's really worth a look.
So although this says it's the final change order, it may not be. Just for public record, it may not be. We'll have to come back, take a look at it.
It, it can be approved as a non-final.
Strike final.
The only, the only place that says final right now is in your cover memo.
It does say final in the change order itself. This change order is being issued to adjust the quantities to final as constructed quantities.
Yep, that, that is true. And that, that wording did come from the consultant.
Do we have a motion on this yet?
No.
Oh, well, I'd make a motion to prove it, striking the word final.
Is there a second? Motion by Roby, second by Danforth. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Just a, a quick thank you to all the, the city staff. As Sarah opened up, you guys have a tremendous parking rec and, and staff. I mean, I'd list all the names here, but I probably missed somebody. So just thank you, everybody, and we appreciate the opportunity on this project. And I think as a whole, it, it came off great. So thank you again.
Thanks for your good work, Lucas. Thanks.
Item number twelve is old business. Do we have any old business? Item number thirteen, new business. Anything new?
Mayor, the topic of the overlay district and the requirements for the, the products used on the outside of the building, the building materials has kind of come up as of late with, with Trav's Outfitter and the finalization of what they're trying to get done with their building. I think Trav has contacted several of us on the council with questions, many of which I couldn't answer. I think what we need to do is I need to, we don't need to do that here tonight, but I think we need to, to go back and, and kind of re-educate ourselves as to how the overlay district for that area came about, uh, how it was determined, what the intent was. And I think that we need to see if, um, if it still meets what our intention, what, what's being done and what's being suggested in regards to design and in this, in this case specifically to Trav's, whether that, uh, does or does not meet our intention with the overlay district. So, um, you know, that's probably a, you know, cannon chain type issue where somebody's got to pull that together and meet on that. But I, I think it needs to get looked at. Um, we had a lot of discussion when that first came out. It kind of turned into a meat and potatoes kind of ordinance language in regards to earth tones and some of the requirements. And we said, okay, what happens if a Lowe's comes to town and they want orange? Well, we'll deal with orange when it comes. Uh, what happens if Chevy's comes to town and they want to use metal on the outs? Well, we'll deal with that when, when the time comes. Well, I think the times come. And I think we need to take a look at, uh, what our requirements are, how we're defining its use and make sure that we still are working towards what our intention, at a minimum, what our intention was then, or what at least it should be now, two, three years later. So I'd like to see that done and that really needs to happen sooner than later as there's efforts on his part that are trying to get done as far as construction goes, so.
Are you looking at the whole overlay district requirements or specifically just materials on the outside?
Well, right now the issue is the materials. Yeah, I mean, that, that's the issue. I don't know what else would, I haven't heard that much about anything else within the, the overlay requirements. Um, I think the materials, the building materials issue is the one that needs to get addressed initially.
Specifically, I also met with Trav Uthe on this and he's using a variety of materials on the outside of his building. It's a pretty cool looking building and he's going for a certain look, being an outdoor store. But a couple of those materials don't, as I understand it, are, are not allowed or are disallowed in the overlay district. So that, that's really the question.
Metal siding.
And, and this was originally intended, just a little background too, was for the, they called it the gateway overlay district. You know, sort of protects, I think that's about ten years ago probably. It was a long time ago. But anyway, we, we looked at that and we, we did spend a considerable amount of time trying to figure out what we were going to do. Our big concern back then was we're, you know, we get a bunch of Morton, not, not there's anything wrong with a Morton building, but you know, more big steel buildings all over, uh, uh, that, that gateway district. And so, um, we did put some restrictions on, on metal siding. Now, we did, like Mike said, we did, I think there was, there was a review committee set up and I talked to Ken about this a little bit. There was a review committee. I think it was the mayor, the city attorney at the time, and then also, uh, Ken. And, uh, Ken's coming this way right now. But, uh, that was the thing and, and we knew that if there was somebody that had something different, perhaps like what we got with, with Trav, there'd be an appeals process for them to go to. And then it gets a little gray for me because it sounds like it might've gone to the board of adjustments. I don't know. For them to make that decision. It may have changed from that. And so, uh, it wasn't set in stone, but it was like, like you say, earth tones and wood and brick and rock and, um, you know, and they could use, uh, precast concrete as long as they had gout, gout, grout. Nothing wrong, that's a bad deal having gout on your building. Um, swells up and you know, it's a good way to add on. But anyway, not that I know a lot about gout. But anyway, so that's sort of how that evolved as, as I recall and, and some of that I, you had to refresh my memory, so.
Process did start over, over ten years ago and it actually in oh eight and then did, did approve in ten. And, and believe it or not, many of you, Palish Bueller, Danforth, Alderman, Pat Waldner, Russ Wilkins, Craig Atkins, Steve Thorson as a council member, Gary Williams, Stanton Fox, Sarah Karen, Cindy Herning, myself, Roger Adams, they're all on those planning committee at the time we did it. And we had actually, of course, Rick Schlechner and Herb was there at the time because they were Stanton Fox. But we did bring in all of the, all of the landowners too, had been a couple of times brought through this process with us when we originally started. But again, you know, it's, it was done almost ten, eight, ten years ago and it could, maybe does need to be re-looked at. Ken, the thing I'm always concerned about is precedent. You know, once you breach precedent or, or step outside, then, then there's a hole in the boat and there's changes galore. But the question I have to ask is, I think you kind of alluded to, the materials have changed quite a bit the last few years. And you see some buildings out there that do have a little bit of metal, metal on them, whatever. If it's done tastefully, not overdone, is that something we should consider? Well, actually with the new ordinance right now, anything that doesn't about a street or a side can be metal. So if they actually had a rear yard, you could do the three sides and a front and put the back, could be metal under the current ordinance. But Travis is one of those particular cases. He's got three fronts and a side. So he's, he doesn't have that leeway within the ordinance as it currently exists for him to utilize that issue, so. But there is getting to be a lot more of these type of, uh, you know, set buildings, like you say, the Lowe's and the Chevy's and all those other ones that have their own motive, even Hobby Lobby and them.
I, you know, I get where we're, where we were at then, uh, you know, and I, I know, and Bruce shared it, is our concern was that we were going to have these little strip malls that are just going to be little buildings with sheet metal on the outside and, well, we don't want that. It wasn't wanted in that area. And if I remember right, going back, I think the, the landowners at the time didn't want that either. That wasn't their intent. So there was involvement, at least to my recollection, on the, from the landowner's standpoint. But to me, I think we got to take, re-look at it because there's a lot of different, like Don said, a lot of different materials, architectural changes in regards to what's, uh, what they're made up of and how they're made and, and how they look and, and incorporated into designs. You know, I think we have to take a look at it to me to have, allow some of that. So maybe we have to restrict it to a percentage of a side of a building where it's a, you know, or, or something. But I, I would just like to take a look at it, kind of, because it has been eight, nine years, whatever it is. You know, let's kind of regroup at it, see what we did and what, what notes we have and, and see if we could or should make any kind of change now that we're this far along. And now that we're starting, you know, let's be honest, we've got our first building in that area. You're just.
For the most part, it is.
Right, for the most part, other than those coming off of Nineteenth Street. But, uh, so I think we need to take a look at it and, and to be ready. I think we want it to be inviting. I think we want to be reasonable. You know, we talked about in, in, in the mayor's state of the city thing about, you know, our, our ability to have affordable housing and our economic health. Well, part of that is, is not throwing up obstacles unnecessarily for people that are building businesses or such in our build, in our community. So we don't want to, uh, just arbitrarily put cost onto them. So, uh, I'd, I'd, I'd like us to do that, sooner the better so that he can get, it is imminent because they're breaking ground and doing things out there now and they need to finalize things. So we need to take a peek at this and see, um, and just see where we get with that.
Who do we need to bring together for this?
You can start with a committee, but it, it has to go to the plan commission and public hearings.
Because it would be an ordinance change.
An ordinance change and, and you would definitely want the plan commission.
Right.
Involved with their vision and, um,
Maybe we can touch base on it tomorrow afternoon.
What's tomorrow?
You're going to be there, right? The Sign Co?
Oh, yeah. Yes, I am. I knew it.
I will be there.
Top on my list. But anyway, I appreciate you guys doing that. I think it's important that we take a look at it. I, I just don't want us to be, I drove around town today and I looked at some buildings and, um, you know, I look at the one, for example, that, uh, the co-op is done out on two twelve and the ones that they're building now, they kind of blend in a little bit of all those things, which is kind of similar to what Trav is doing with his look. Um, gosh, it looks really nice to me. I think it can be done well.
That's my summary is that materials have changed such that I think we should consider. Ten years ago I wouldn't. But materials have changed. If you look at a lot of construction now, they are mixing and matching different things. And in the emails we traded, I gave some examples where they've done that. It looks really, really good. So I'm with you.
Well, I visited with Trav as well. Um, and you know, his concern is if he, if he does take this to the board of adjustments and you got a couple of individuals just don't think that's the right thing, you know, I mean, then what's he do? I mean, if they say no at that appeal, what's his next step? So, yeah, so that's, this is it. It's for us to, to review this.
We're at the next step.
Yeah. And like, and like Don said, we got to watch out for precedent too and, you know, what, what type of.
If there's an appetite for changes for one business, let's look at it from a plan commission standpoint and maybe the whole restriction needs to be removed.
I'm not saying that it should be removed.
Or changed.
I think it has to be looked at for maybe redefinition. Cause I don't, I'm, I would be against complete removal of it.
Some other items in that overlay district that you also might want to address. I think other things have come up too, haven't they? With landscaping and.
Well, here's the only thing I'm going to say though, guys. I don't want this to drag into a six month project because Trav's doesn't have six months, right? He needs answers. And so if we, we got to take this in pieces, you know, he, he deserves an answer. I, I think he's got a, a legitimate request of us to look at it. Don't know what the outcome will be. Um, but I think he's got a legitimate request and I think that's what I would like to see us get done. Sooner the better and see what we can get. And if that means that we address only one issue within there right now, then let's get that done and we can look at the bigger picture after that, so.
I agree with that. I think that we should move on that. Cause we're probably going to have others, hopefully, that are going to want to come in. And I just remember the conversation four years ago or five or whatever it was, that if these other people come in and say, well, we're not going to have a brown, then what are you going to do? We're not going to use brown. Well, then we said, well, then we're going to meet with them. And I think that's where we are now. So I would say, Ken, that's a great idea to move forward on that quickly.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Any other new business? Any liaison member reports?
It's really not a liaison report, but I, you know, the last meeting I asked for some numbers on the final costs with the wellness facility and Kristen shared those numbers with me. I can't get my email open. That was, I was trying to find my password. I don't have it. But, uh, could, do you have those numbers? Can I just give about numbers? Without land, I believe it was twenty three point, twenty two point three, about twenty two point three million dollars, all in on that. Uh, with land, it was a little over twenty three, about twenty three one, twenty three two, something like that. So, um, you know, if you look back at that, you know, our, the max budget for construction only, which, uh, wouldn't include a lot of the engineering and, and the land and such was twenty four million. And, and at one point we were at twenty eight, I believe Bruce, wasn't it? Where we had the estimated numbers at twenty eight. So, um, as it ended up, uh, I think we've got, uh, we've got a really, really wonderful facility there. It's being received well. And those are the final numbers. I've been asking for those numbers and I think that's important that we look at that when we're done and share those numbers with the, the public because they kind of get all over the place. You know, you hear twenty one, you hear twenty six, you hear twenty, I mean, so. So that's your numbers. Uh, all in with dirt and everything was twenty three, one, two. And without dirt, but all engineering was, uh, right around that twenty two, three, something like that, so.
Under budget, you're trying to say.
Under budget.
Under budget.
So some of that money was taken out the year before. Was it two million dollars that we had that we spent before? I'm just trying to get the figure that what we have left now for Vince and his ice arena type plans here. But if that was really twenty one and then the softball field is five, so do we in fact have at least four million dollars that is, is that, is there more than four million dollars?
What Shelley said was at an eight and a half million dollar building, that we were three and a half million dollars short. So that means.
So we have four and a half million.
No. We're, would be five million. Yeah.
The softball complex actually came in right close to six million. Because you said what? It's three, it's three million in cash and about two million that's outstanding in the way of pledges coming in.
The two million is what needs to be considered, is the pledges, but they don't come in all at once. So that's kind of the, the point to remember.
Well, Christian, what was the overall cost for the softball complex? Not, and having, doesn't have anything to do with outside monies or us? What was the overall cost? Was that five point five?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
All right. Any other liaison reports? I do not have anything to discuss in executive session. We don't have a proposal. And we can't just, can we go into executive session to?
I think, I think we could to discuss a possible contract.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, there, because there is existing contract and, yes.
Okay, okay. But since we don't have a specific written proposal to consider, we won't be taking any action. So we'll go into executive session to discuss a contract matter.
I think that makes sense. I agree.
Okay. Could I have a motion second and go into executive?
Second.
Moved by Danforth, second by Y. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we are in executive session. Microphone.